So.
Yeah, are we ready?
Yeah, thank you. We move on to commission discussion and some answers to the question too. Um, can we do one for questions? So. Someone else was writing a question down.
Oh. Um. Basically, uh, the land lot, um, Mike Chapel mentioned that he would be landlocked. Can we clarify that I don't believe he would be.
Sure, can we pull up the cadastro over there? Or that that would be hard to pull. How do you mean that? I'll just ask Mike a quick question. Um, I don't know if you could ask for a pardon me, but how many acres is that above the the Summit Street? That you have up there, Mike?
It's somewhere between eighteen and twenty-eight acres.
And it goes from F Street all the way to where?
I'm not sure.
Okay. Can I ask a question? I'm not on my phone, I can't get the cadastro to pull up on this. I can't, is there a way we can do the cadastro up here or is that? Of course. Thank you. So it looks like it goes from about F F Street until the L Street alley, um, all along that. Planted Summit Street. In that, so, located. So I think your question was about access.
Yeah, Mike was worried he's gonna be landlocked.
So he'll still, if we abandon it, he still has his half. Um, that he could potentially use in any way that he wanted. Uh, he could certainly use it for access, the alley access is there. Um, on on G, even though it's probably not usable. Um, the between G and H. Uh, and then there is access off of each one of those streets. Um, that you can see where the ditch is.
Yeah.
Um. And. Does that road that crosses at North End and then comes back along the ditch, does that come into that, your place on the back bike? I'm not sure. Okay.
But yeah, I just, I mean, it's accessible from G Street. And.
If if you look.
H or any of the other, no, streets.
Well, you have to go across the ditch.
Right.
Um, and so the the street access ends basically at the ditch in all those properties. So if he doesn't have access unless he.
Put the fridge or something.
Somebody. Um, the North End Street access, it goes across the ditch at R N and then comes back along the roads that are through there. There's some access there, but I'm not sure, um, that it would access all parts of the property. Certainly the access on the the GH Street side would would the topography lends itself to access there. Better. Uh, there's still the alley access between F and G as well.
Yeah, and then G Street.
I forgot a question.
Go right in for them.
No, there's not. There's no.
No, there's not.
There's not a access up there between F and G.
Okay, um, let's just, please, don't shout out from the, you know, gallery. And I have to stop everyone. So. It doesn't look like there's any access to most of that area at this.
So when I say access, um, I'm talking about, is there a dedicated public way? To which that neighboring property could be accessed? Is it, is it a difficult access? Absolutely, but those don't, uh, the the crossing of the ditch is already down on streets in those sections on, um. North F and North Street. Not that he gets access from that.
Mm-hmm, and from G.
And he still retains his half of that Summit Street easement?
Right, twenty-three feet.
The twenty-three feet.
I just wanted to make sure. Before we're swallowed, somebody in.
Uh, if you had access, there would be an easement as a matter of fact.
Right.
From somewhere.
Right.
I know, let me, may I ask some questions to what Courtney was saying, I think?
Yeah.
One of the points of access you named was the alley between G and H Street.
So there's a dedicated public way?
Right.
Um, and that's that little yellows? Correct, but it's my understanding that, um, that it's. It's not as usable now as it would be when they were finished with it, if they finished the the pro- the project in the way that they're talking about it. Because then it would be access up through the alley because that's where they're gonna get their utilities. And then there would basically be two alleys that were parallel to the the Summit Street. Um, through the property so that they could have access for, um, the people that are accessing the actual houses as well as fire trucks, garbage trucks. Police, um, all of those folks would have access through that, go through twenty-five.
Can you show that to us?
No, I I can, I'm not sure I can do it without without Darcy's.
I can, I can show you, I can point it, you can talk or I can do it, Anna.
They just, they just write these a lot.
Come on, Diana.
Jerome?
Yes, please come on.
Can you make sure?
You can just throw a tree in my house.
So, point out where the the street is now.
G Street.
So that's G Street. And then the property that they have is that property right there in that first square to the right. Then there is an alley. And then they want the property immediately to the right of that. So what you saw in her presentation was that there were gonna be, um, potentially two houses on the first property. And then on the bottom of that property, there would be two or three more.
What is it?
One or two. And then on the right-hand side property, there would one, be one house towards the top corner. And then potentially two to three houses on that bottom side. And then there would be a parallel alley that would run from what I would call east to west. Um, that would provide access for the residents as well as services.
So my question is. Those, I think they described it as two driveways in the presentation.
Yeah.
Correct.
So. The reason for the two driveways is because that alley is not accessible. Which is why the driveways would need to be built. So I'm just thinking maybe that's not an access point to that property if the driveways are required to reach the H Street lot.
So the alley isn't going away, we're not abandoning the alley.
But it's functionally that useful.
Not now it's not.
Okay.
Um, the alley as it would exist after the development is where the utility quarter would be. You know, generally we have water in the streets and sewer in the alley. So that they would bring the utilities in on that alley. Um, and then there would be, um. Correct me if I'm wrong, but there would still be north-south alley access to the top of the property. Okay.
So that alley will be developed so that.
Correct.
Utility people and.
It would be much better than it is now.
Utility people and the city staff can all. And public works that obviously need to be able to access that alley, so that alley is gonna, what is the alley like now? Is alley undeveloped now or is it?
Undeveloped.
It's undeveloped because the the utilities don't go up that far yet.
They go up some other direction to get to those.
Um, they're the, they're to the houses below. Um, so that, yeah, so the city water and sewer are to the, two houses below those two lots. Um, but as far as I know, they did in, um, right there where those two houses.
Of the alley access?
Well, there's water and electric, but no gas and sewer.
But are they, are those current utilities at that alley access?
Correct. That's where they, that's where they come through. Isn't that where the water and the sewer and the gas are, or that?
No, the sewer and gas is through the alley.
Can you turn on your mic, please, just so people can.
The sewer and gas is coming through that alley, not the, they end. And then that needs to be extended, the water is on G Street, which I was talking. I mean, that's typical.
I'd have to pull up the water map.
But that, that's pretty much typical of the way cities lay out.
Absolutely.
So that part of the alley would be developed and accessible through the easement, the two easements are going through.
So the reason then is because H Street doesn't go up the other side, that's the, alright.
Dead ends of the ditch.
Okay. Let's take your floor of it.
The other question they had, this is just in regards to the last bit you were talking about. Can you really just lay it out in plain talk? The width of Summit, the width of the Summit easement. There's been so many different like numbers thrown around on the sheet, I just need to hear it, um, in a sound bite.
So one of the things that I thought that Darcy said that was really helpful was that when this flat was laid down in the late eighteen hundreds, early nineteen hundreds. All of the streets were platted at sixty-six feet, notwithstanding the topography that they were platted across. So, and that those were, it's basically a taking, when we decide as as a government where we're gonna foot roads, we're taking that property from the people on either side. So it's not public property, it just has a public dedication for for that use. So if we were to abandon it, that's when the the dedication, um, would be accepted, but in this case, there was, dedication would remain as, uh, as an easement. For that one-track trail that's anticipated in the active transportation plan in that location.
So I just, I just need the distances, so. So it's sixty-six feet wide and they're talking about wanting twenty-three feet or no, yeah, twenty-three maybe. They, I thought they said twenty-three feet for development. And then the ten feet remaining on that half would go towards whatever trail plan.
That is absolutely correct.
And then, um. The other half belongs to.
Mr. Chapel.
Mr. Chapel who is here.
Correct.
And he said that he's opposed. So. So that means it's just ten feet.
So what we would get as a, as an easement is just ten feet. Um, unless he wanted to add to that, and he certainly could.
But he doesn't have to.
He doesn't have to. Um, but if he wanted, if he wanted wider access, I'm sure that he would, he would partner, um, in order to create a wider access. So that he could get in and out more easily with equipment or whatever he needed to do. I mean, if he wants to develop, if he wants to create an access of any kind, um, that would be something other than the one track that's contemplated in the active transportation plan. It would, it would require some widening, um, but ten feet is still wide enough for people.
I, um, thank you, I just would need clarity on those distances. Thank you.
I'll go with another question, um. So. Explain from start to finish the process that any property owner takes in the city's process when dealing with that request to vacate or abandon. Um. City property or or right of ways.
Sure.
What's the process?
So they apply for the abandonment and they they pay a fee for that application and then it walks through this process. Um, in order to get to a decision by the commission to abandon or not abandon, um, that roadway.
So they apply, then walks through the process, give us that.
So the process is that, that it, it goes through the commission to determine whether or not it's going to be, um, abandoned or or retained?
So it goes on to an agenda?
Correct.
And the request is made right to the city, the city brings it to the commission.
Then the commission has a, um, a public hearing, which is what we did today.
Or they bring it to put it on a future.
They could.
Hearing, which is what we.
And and in this, um, in in the city of Livingston, there are a bylaws for the Parks and Trails committee that indicate that they have an opportunity to review those things. And so that that is also part of the process. Um, it's it's advisory, um, but the commission is the ultimate decision.
Um, is Montana law applied to each request, is there any opinion on that at all?
If not code per se, it's a general principle of the property law. And so when the government flats the the property, those are even, basically you own the middle of the road. But the the public has the right to use that. So, um. When it was platted early on, we took that property for a public purpose. It doesn't belong to us, which is why we don't have the right to sell it. Um, but it it was dedicated to that purpose. So when we decide, when the property owners, because they are the underlying owner of the property, want to ask the governing body, whether it's the city or county. To, um, abandon a roadway or an easement or right of way, which is what this is, a right of way. Um, then they do it through this application process and bring it through the governing body, Chris.
So then, as far as processes statewide, this, that is our process. Something we created partly with the Parks and Trails, you know, point that you made. Um, what do other communities do, do they have very similar processes or are are each? Each community, are they creating sort of this, their own process? And the reason I ask is, it's one of my least favorite. Uh, statements made about commission and, um, I'll just say it, there was a statement made by just an organization that said. Create a fair and transparent, fair, transparent and equitable process. And I feel like we're very transparent and, which I'm always biased about that statement, but. How are other communities being transparent, fair, transparent and equitable and how is this not?
Um, so when we talk about, uh, public participation and equity, um, it requires that there be some vigilance on the part of the citizens. To to look to see what things that are going on in the government, um, are are of interest to them. Um, there are certain instances where we give specific notice to property owners, but we don't do that in this case and it's not required under the law. Um, other cities work through something like the same process. If there were to be no process in a local governing body, um, to deal with the roadway, there could be a quiet paddle action in district court. To allow everybody to come into that, um, discussion formally. So it would be the property owner bringing the city or the county to, uh, district court to say, what's your position on retaining or abandoning this, this right of way or this easement? So that, that's the the formal court process. Um, and that doesn't generally happen unless the municipality or the county doesn't have a process, process that is like this to discuss, um. The, the right of way and and whether it should be, uh, dedicated back to the public.
Thank you, very helpful information. Um, and then one else, I'm gonna say one later.
Me too, um.
I have, there's other questions that could be answered.
No, you go, go ahead.
Go ahead. Do you have some too, or why don't I have before?
I know, but I.
Uh.
You ask.
We have questions for the public that I wonder if we could.
That's what I.
Do you wanna go first?
No, you go.
Um. Trying to choose which one to do first, um, okay, so this is pretty basic. Can we get somebody to look at like the old sign situation over there? Is that, that's a city sign, I assume, and figure out if that's visible or if there's some, something going on with the trees that need to be dealt with, so we can sign for that.
We could, um, I don't know, Scott's here. Um, and those things are generally done by complaint, can you post Works Department? Um, as far as I know, I I don't have any information that suggests that's ever been a complaint submitted to the city or the Works Department prior to today.
Can we just call this the official complaint now?
Did it put on the list? Um, you'll. I can, I can refer it to Shannon, um, but it's probably going to need to be in conversation with those people who think it's a problem so that it can be further defined. Shannon can look at some of the guidelines around signage, but that may not, um, be necessarily what the neighbors were concerned about.
Sure, but if somebody could follow up, that's not a commission thing to drive out to neighborhoods and look at signs, that'd be awesome. Um, there was a question about access, what other access is available? Um. I don't know, there is any other access on G Street where, uh, Scott was talking about? Did you guys catch that question? He, he asked what other access was available. And, um. The folks in that neighborhood were talking about, I'll just, I'll just put it all together in one big group. Um, access is an issue on that street, it looks like winter is a serious issue in that, on that street and. Anytime there's runoff or like snow melt or heavy rain, it's an issue, and I live on the north side, so I believe it. Um, they get run it up pretty quickly and it's concerning if people aren't able to get to their houses safely in the winter. Um. Do you, do you have anything that you would wanna comment on or share regarding those topics, just the general issues with G Street?
I I would defer to Shannon on a lot of it, I know that there is. There has been, um, an unwillingness to impose additional taxes on those folks who have lived in those neighborhoods. I know we heard a fair amount about, um, night skies and and not wanting lights in some places. Um, but without reviewing additional development, there's not going to be additional money to, um, pay for the improvements. Uh, that people are looking for. And it, it, there's been no real political will to impose additional taxes for road improvements in some of those, you know, basically dead-end areas. Um, when there are. Other, other roads that have been deferred, the maintenance has been deferred longer and I, and I think you've heard of the many, many projects that Shannon has in person.
I, yeah, I, um, I suppose another avenue that comes up is neighborhood folks to get together and request a special improvement district.
Absolutely.
And that's something that's most commonly what special improvement districts are used for, is when they want specific things in their neighborhood. They just. Work with the city staff to make it clear what they want. And they could get some estimates on what that would look like before committing to anything, they could have those conversations with city staff.
We have made estimates like that before, yes.
Okay, thanks, um. The other issue that I have that we. I'm probably missing some things, but is encroachment, so I too have walked the easement. And I too found it walkable, it's already game trails. Um. There does seem to be, I'm not a professional surveyor, but it does seem like there probably are some encroachment issues. Can you speak, and what I mean by that is private property owners encroaching on public right of ways? Can you speak to that at all?
I really couldn't without evaluating what each encroachment might look like. Um. All of those people have private property rights and they should be either, there may be some things that are grandfathered in because they've been there a long time. But new construction should be permitted and done with the city's design standards that you guys have spent a lot of time looking at over the last year or so.
So if folks have questions like about, things like fences that are encroaching or other things that were brought up tonight. Who would be the appropriate person for them to reach out to the city to get those questions? To get, to get more information on?
Um, so if people think, think they're encroaching into the public right of way, I know which is obviously a violation of a law since they should file a complaint with our compliance officer who apparently is Officer State. Um, and basically, all zoning, you know, the ordinance, compliance in the city, uh, that's not handled, controls handled by them. So I'd be the first to talk to, uh, the best way to reach out would be to call the city's dispatch and ask this, or just file a, an official complaint. Uh, basically, that'll trigger an investigation process of whether or not the, they might offensive property.
Thanks, that's helpful for people to know where to get information since we don't always have it at city commission meetings. And I assume the complaint form is just on the city website, probably easy to find. With the website.
I don't think there's an official form, it's essentially just submitting a letter, um, I don't think my.
That might be even easier than navigating a website, thank you. Um. So, Chairwoman, that's, that's one of my questions, those are the questions that I heard. I probably missed some things, but that's what I.
Yeah, I just, um. I had two that, um, Wayne can think, uh, mentioned, um. The retaining wall, um. Under property which is adjacent, I'm worried about. Um, pressure on that, um, I don't know how to address that, so.
I'm gonna give you a very unsatisfying answer that nobody's going to like in that this abandonment, uh, development on the property is not pulled into what they said tonight, nor is it subject to commission or public review. Um, I will say that we're tending more to be engineered, so they will have to be engineered. Um, but it's not the commission or the public's role to review the development on the property. Um, they could build, it looks like they have about ten lots between the two chunks, they could build under the zoning, uh, up to ten drawn units and ten EUs without any sort of review other than the planning department, fire department, all the perks. And.
Yeah, that's, that I'm well aware of, I've just, um, they're concerned about their existing retaining wall and, uh. I'm sure the developer would question, but that's something that would be a cross during, uh, days of that. Obviously, they have something else of property. And then Rick was, um, Dan Aker was talking about Montana Street, um, Montana Street from that area does not go all the way through the gutter.
True, to where?
You have a west and an east and it's, they do not join up.
They don't.
You have.
Hook up.
Correct, correct, there's the hill in between, yeah, there's raw land in between.
Alright, that's, I just wanted to clarify, like, clarify that, that, um. I think it, Montana ends with that or something like that, isn't it?
It ends at G.
Oh, yeah.
It, it doesn't end at G, I picked that up. It looks like it ends at G, when it looks like a street, you go across. Uh, G and Montana turns into looking like the driveway of the house that I bought in April. It's a one lane, never maintained dirt road. That, uh, goes past the house and then hooks at ninety and looks like an alley. I guess it is an alley.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Those were the only two questions I. I had or.
Can I get a clarification, so that's twenty units though on the way it's currently. Plotted?
So it's on R two, which allows, uh, one drawn unit, one EU for a thirty-five hundred square feet, it looks like there's ten original lots between both sides of the alley there, so.
So with no easement, ten units and ten EUs?
They have that proper access, no, except for the fire department, uh, there is a right of way there, so if there were to go up the road, it would be basically the same development pattern as the rest of the. basically the same development pattern as the rest of town on R2, which is the end of it.
Yeah, I'm sure. One of my problems with this, and I think I said this. One else, I'm trying to take a look at this. We got all these people here. But my first thought was when we, I'm down with this second thing, you really need to be looking at what you should be looking at and have somebody answer the question when you're looking at something and it gets pretty enveloping in your mind. And then all these people come here, I have no idea what's going on, you know, the suffering. And so my thought was that when we get this, is that we're going out with somebody, trying to adjust what this is, so that we all see the same thing. And especially when you, especially after everybody telling us about the thing, you know, we don't live there. I lived on Summit on the other, they're in Sackville, 20 years ago, and we got there. The only thing I learned was some parts of, of that area, the builder was told that he put sidewalks in some spacing for the grass and stuff like that. Our house was on a dirt road with no sidewalks. Above the house in a very windy area, I mean, the Sackville. So it was up to somebody to tell them to hold it and do some things. But I've been listening to all these people here, all these questions. When you're right there looking at it, it means words mean, um, 25 things coming at you, so it's, it's all in terms of. These are his driveway, his homes, the whole thing. It's just not a clear picture and these folks live there. And they're much more than human for it, and we don't. So I, I don't know if it's, but if you're lucky, have somebody or they're all looking at it together. Especially when the question said we've got some, it's just used a little bit more on to me, there's a much more thorough question.
Anything else? Anyone else have comments, uh, so we can move on to a decision?
You go first. Okay, um, yeah, I guess my final comment, uh, look, looking at the big picture of this whole thing, we're only, we're looking at, um, giving up 23 feet in width of property to be able to shift the developments so to allow easements and, um, utility easements through the property. And, uh, it's not like we're you know, giving up 30 or 40 acres or something like this. We're literally looking at 23 feet, um, that were abandoned, um, in the favor of Cooks.
What's the gist? What's the gist there?
Some comments from the audience. I think it's a small price, um, pay to get a, a, a good development up through that. And, uh, the impact fees and stuff, that's how the area gets approved. As was mentioned earlier, so. The way I, I, I'm very much in favor of, um, this development, this is in line with the growth policy. Not that that's, you know, that's a guiding document, it's not a be an end all for everything, but, um, to me this is a worthwhile project and, uh, I look forward to voting in favor of, of you.
Thank you, Quentin. Wilson? First, I want to thank everyone that's here tonight. This is one of the most civil, respectful, difficult conversations that I've witnessed since I've been a commissioner, and I just really appreciate that everybody brought their A game. To be so spanking nice to each other tonight, so thank you. Um, Cooks, people love you. I've been getting a lot of emails about how much you're appreciated in our community, so I want you to know that. My issue right now, or my concern is really process. So we have in the growth policy in a couple places of objective 8.2.4 and strategy 9.2.1.1. Both identifying that we should really be evaluating for bicycle pedestrian and trail connectivity when we're considering requests for abandonment. And also identifying monitoring and protecting public access to public lands and partnering to help ensure public right of ways are maintained, open and accessible. I think that's what we're working on. I do want to reference the meeting minutes from the last commission meeting on September 21st. We postponed the public hearing where this was considered last time in the notes, I'm going to read from the minutes. Carters, carters recommend pulling item from consideration to allow for information from the draft active transportation plan to be incorporated. We all voted in favor. So we do not have the draft active transportation plan tonight. It's not in our packet. I haven't read it. I've heard it quoted a couple times, that the draft says 10 feet for the trail. I've not seen that. And the agenda though is a public comment from our active transportation coalition that was written on August 17th. So I presume that it was submitted prior to the last commission meeting to be included as comment the last time we had this on an agenda and it was tabled. In this, it actually says that 10 foot easement is insufficient and it lists several reasons. I'm not going to read them, because it's in the packet and that's available for everyone to read on page 45. Um, but it does say that 10 feet is insufficient, so my pri, my primary concern right now is we postpone this for a specific reason. And that was to be able to look at the active transportation plan draft and we still don't have it before us. And that's what I voted in favor of last time, was having that information and we don't have it. And that's also what was requested from the active transportation coalition is that we we have that before we make a decision. My greatest hope is that that plan would help give us information to figure out what's going to work for the most number of people in our community. Think we need to have more conversation. We need to see this plan like we were told we would see it before we were voting on this. Are you?
Thank you, Winston.
Okay, in, uh, in disclosure, I've, uh, never met the books before tonight. I own, uh, my wife and I own the last house before the ditch on G Street. Some, one of my neighbors that was mentioned here tonight also mentioned in email to the city, uh, about the general condition of G Street and shoveling gravel off the road has a, as a, as a problem now. I look at, uh, oh, I'd like to address one other thing too. Regardless, or regardless of property prices, the city cannot sell abandoned property. It, it belongs to the owner that, uh, is on both sides of it. So you can't sell what you don't own. Nobody's making any, uh, landfill going. So it should be a win-win situation. The, the city, uh, that house, uh, that won't even be rehabbed until probably the spring has had more phone calls from, uh, just wearing the grapevine from people wanting to rent it. So rental property and, and proper rental property, meaning not vacation rentals, uh, is desperately needed. And, uh, the amount of land that will be, uh, lost as it were, uh, when you go up and look at the property, which I did with some people from P C E C, is, I wouldn't say meaningless, but, uh, it certainly is miniscule. That's, that's a very large area out there. So the trail would not be lost. What I would think would be very well-done rental for housing units would be good in place. And it's balancing act, you can't take and have everything wild and need housing. There's got to be some give and take, and I think this is minimal, and I think it's also being done, shall we say, with, uh, great degree of integrity, not some unknown, uh, that has no background, uh, in living. So working out the details of when, of making it a win-win situation is what I think is needed. Thank you.
Thanks, Warren. Anyone else?
I guess.
I have a lot to say, but I'll try to say just a little. What's been interesting about this request of this location, our abandonment, street abandonment is where it started initially and where it is now has really shifted. So what people are concerned about has went from, um, abandoning a public right of way and keeping to value on infill to access. And I mean, it, it just keeps going on and on, and I find, find it very interesting, um, that I mean, all of these decisions really are very multifaceted, and this is one of them. But I always, I'm going to go back to my initial statement I've made multiple times as a commissioner and I will continue to make it. I in the past have made, I feel, made a bad decision. One in particular where we voted to abandon, um, or to vacate a street. And in retrospect, we made a mistake. And I believe it, and I have said to myself from then on that I'm not going to do that any longer. I'm not going to vacate properties without it being, or vacate city right of ways without it being very, very thought out. Very, um, I mean, it should take years of process to get to, um, vacating it. And I think this is one of those examples, I'm going to stand by it, that I don't believe we should vacate public right of ways because I see, especially in that last, um, pedestrian look, seeing that strip that is a public right of way right now. Soon as this, that goes away, it's gone. And and those two properties, yes, they may get more and we may get an additional housing unit, and I agree, I want infill. Everyone I know is working towards that, and all people who own properties are trying to fill in somewhere in their property, it seems like. Um, trying to come up with solutions that help our community. But giving up that big strip, because this is, that would happen, the next one would request, and the next one. And we'd go through this process over and over again, and we would end up with potentially not what we really need, which is great access to the north side, to the north hill, to the blocks. And I think it's premature at this point. And I do think, I just said it sets a precedence. I did, um, the question on, and frustration, I guess, for this area of our community that there seems to be sort of a um, neglect of the streets and of the, um, infrastructure that we do get in other areas. Do you recall in our traffic study, did we address that area as well? Matthew, I, I'm trying, I think it stopped before we got to that area.
I honestly can't answer that question. Um, if you give me a minute, I can go off the north side of transportation.
But I think that we've made some mistakes as a community. Not dealing with from giving up things in the past, not, not making developers follow through when they promised they would. You just look, I mean, on our street, sidewalks, and then our house doesn't have sidewalks. Someday we're going to have to pay for sidewalks. I dread it because it's really quite a big property, but we should. We should have, we should pay for the sidewalks as well. But I think we've made mistakes and that's, I feel, is the mistake, um, that we commit. And, um, seeing that last map really helped me kind of complete my thoughts on it and the property is still buildable, there's still options for the, the landowners on both sides and, um, above and below. And, um, I think abandoning this property would not be in our best interest. Or abandoning the right of way.
Chair, to answer your question, uh, the north side transportation plan does not cover this area. It essentially goes to the old sign street.
Thank you. That is all I have for this one. Anyone else before we bring it to a vote?
I have a question. Why don't we have the draft active transportation plan? Pardon me?
Uh, we don't have a draft at this time. Uh, right now we have a map of, sort of a draft trails map, we don't have a full, uh, draft plan at this point. It's like a draft of a single.
Chair, I just want to go on the record with, um, my frustration being told that's why we're tableing. That we would have that.
Thank you. And I, I can go back on the record that I did vote against, I was the lone vote against moving this to Republican. So are we ready for a motion? We have a motion from the commission on resolution 4991?
Make motion approve resolution 4991.
Sure. We have a motion by Schwartz and a second by maybe, roll call please.
Mr. Woodland?
No.
Mr. Schwartz?
Four.
Mr. Mason? Mr. May?
Four.
Mr. Lee?
No. Motion fails. Moving on to an abstinence, we have is it Republican? When we name one directly, something, or differently, then I get all the. Um, ordinance number 3017 and ordinance of the city commission of the city of Livingston, Montana, amending Article 4 and Article 5, Chapter 30 of the Livingston Municipal Code entitled zoning as it contains to radial stations.
Uh, so this is the second reading of this zoning tonight. We're going off to the public hearing today, uh, essentially this, uh, active annexed area, this is a dominant area. Allow radial stations within the city of Livingston, and express it is not allowing hours, so our hit there will not be forming. Uh, we are essentially treating radial stations like offices, that's essentially how they're used now. Uh, and, uh, the only additional, uh, change other than the use tables to the parking, add to the parking table. And the parking in regards to their identity to offices. Um, so nothing, nothing too complicated. Um, I'm happy to answer any questions.
All right. Let's open this public hearing. Let's open this public hearing. This is one amendment. But I didn't make sure I'm doing these or saying them correctly because I usually write that down and I didn't. I always write down to make sure I'm going through the process. So this is public hearing on ordinance number 3017. So we will now open this public hearing. Is there any public comment on ordinance 3017? Public hearing is now closed. Any questions, comments?
I just have a really quick question. Is the, so is this, I'm looking at the table on the right-hand column, Matthew. Is that space requirement just for like the International Building Code requirements? Or where does that come from? The four employees or one per 800 square feet of pro-score area?
In this case, it was just mainly thing what's required for offices. Space above, because essentially they have the same parking and employee requirements. I should note that KDRK currently doesn't house any employees on radio stations. It's a type of space that's a problem. But basically, just using offices. Often, we use the IP cables of parking. That's not what occurred in this case. It's just essentially treating radio stations like a way in office.
Are you listening, sir?
No.
I'm going to ask a real basic question. Why are we, what is, why are we needing to?
So we don't need to. We can annex in an existing radio station. So instead of making it a non-conforming structure, for instance, we talked a lot about the fireworks stand, which is a non-conformant structure in the zoning, meaning it wasn't addressed anywhere in the zoning. Mostly because it wasn't used. That was a present in the city. So by adding it to the zoning and allowing it in specific districts, not only do we make KDRK specifically not, not performing, so there are a lot of, not only continue but expand the radio station if they wanted to, or members were to replace on the property. Kind of the same thing they were talking about. Moving the radio for the, the concrete box and actually vacating buildings that a lot of don't use, which means it allows them to be vacuumed. Putting in radio stations and some communication on that property. So basically, it's just addressing a use that now happens because we didn't address on the zoning. And we have an address again, becomes a non-conforming structure. It's not a non-conforming structure, it comes to non-conform use. And if grandfather didn't, he'll let you cease his or continue.
Great, that's very helpful. All right, that was my only question. I appreciate that's what we're thinking. Because it's like a catch. You have to catch it. And it shows the hard work that you guys are doing to catch those little problems that could become bigger problems if we don't address them in our ordinance. Anyone else? We have a motion for sure. Just double check. They're too fast. You ready for motion?
A motion to approve ordinance 3017.
Sure. We have a motion by Leeds and a second by Navy. Roll call, please.
Chair Holman.
Yes.
Mr. Schwartz.
Four.
Mr. Freeman.
Four.
Mr. Navy.
Four.
Mr. Navy.
Four. Motion passes. Next ordinance is an ordinance of the, this ordinance number 3018, an ordinance of the City Commission of the City of Livingston, Montana, amending Article 4, Chapter 30 of the Livingston Municipal Code entitled zoning as it pertains to building heights. Pardon?
This is also a public hearing, Madam Chair. And this is the second reading for this ordinance. You pass it forward to the second reading. At the, not the last meeting, but the meeting before that. And if you have questions, Matthew is capable of answering them.
Would you, since it's Matthew, instead of presenting, just remind all of us of the change that this ordinance?
Sure. So somewhat unusually for us, we've actually had an application from a property owner to amend the text of the zoning. Originally, they had requested that we amend the height restrictions in R1 and R2 from 27 feet to 32 feet, applying to roof pitch greater than 312. The zoning commission actually recommended 34 feet, not 32 feet. Basically, it allowed two 10-foot stories. So you don't have to let the ceiling on both floors of a two-story building. In this case, it would allow a two-and-a-half-story house, essentially with a floor under the roof. So we brought it to you today with that change, as recommended by the zoning commission, being at 34 feet. As long as that roof pitch is greater than 312. If roof pitch is less than 312, the maximum height in R1 and R2 would be in that.
Thank you. This public hearing is now open on ordinance number 318. Any public comment? This public hearing is now closed. Commissioners?
Yeah, it's great. More livable area, I think, footprint. That's what we're going for. Those policies. So I think it's a good change.
A taller, higher livable area, I guess. I recall three years ago, there, we were brought to, or I'm mistaken. It was brought to us with some variances. And we, the city rejected all those variances for some high differences. So I feel for the people that had to battle through that because it took about a year. And they didn't, they had to adjust all their building designs. And now we are offering this to the public. And I'm glad. I just wish for these other people, one way, that we would have some maybe thoughtful respect. That's all I have. Anyone else? We have a motion from the commission on ordinance 318.
Motion to approve ordinance 318.
Sorry. We have a motion by Leeds and a second by Navy. Roll call, please.
Chair Holman.
Yes.
Mr. Schwartz.
Four.
Mr. Freeman.
Four.
Mr. Navy.
Four.
Mr. Navy.
Four. Motion passes. Next ordinance is 3019, an ordinance of the City Commission of the City of Livingston, Montana, amending ordinance number 2085 as quoted by Chapter 6 of the Livingston Municipal Code by altering the membership of the Building Board of Appeals. Pardon?
Madam Chair, this is also a public hearing. This is a board of appeals that hasn't been functioning for at least the last four, five years. I think that it may have carried out changes in the design and building standards, as well as the review process that we've now implemented, that this is probably something that was going to need a appeal process. I don't know that we have an ability, a building permit at any point in recent memory, but we may now that we have the standards. This appeal board is set to go from five to three. There is still a requirement that those folks be knowledgeable in the construction industry, so that they have the ability to effectively review the questions that are being presented by the folks who are building or by our staff who are designing.
We'll open that to public comment first, unless you have a third line question. This public hearing is now open on ordinance 3019. Any public comment? This hearing is now closed. Commissioners, questions? Comment? I'll start. I have one question. Related to the professional credentials, I guess, How is that determined? I mean, some people are like, I'm a good construction, I helped redo my house, or four different houses that I went through. Or I am a master craft person who has had a business functioning for 50 years. Or what, what are those credentials?
So the credentials will be presented in board applications, and you have an opportunity to review and decide whether or not you felt that they met the standards within the standard.
Thank you. Anyone else? We have a motion.
Make motion, approve ordinance 3019. Second.
We have a motion by Schwartz and a second by Freeman. Roll call, please.
Chair Holman.
Yes.
Mr. Schwartz.
Four.
Mr. Freeman.
Four.
Mr. Navy.
Four.
Fourth. Motion passes. Next ordinance is ordinance number 3020, an ordinance of the City Commission of the City of Livingston, Montana, with intent to amend ordinance number 2035 as quoted by Chapter 6 of the Livingston Municipal Code by adopting, by recommends, and execute of the 2018 International Residential Code, the IRC. Pardon?
Madam Chair, this is a public hearing. This is a clarification that was brought to you last meeting about the difference between ABUs and tiny homes and allowing boats. If you have questions about that, Matthew can answer.
Let's open the public hearing first. This public hearing is now open on ordinance number 3020. Any public comment? This public hearing is now closed. Commissioners? Go ahead, Melissa.
So this seems pretty standard to me. And I assume in the future, it will just be lumped in with the rest of the updates from the Montana Department of Labor and Industry. Is that right? We'll vote on one fell swoop in the future?
That would be my assumption. Basically, we have to adopt this appendix of the code because we now allow tiny homes. Now, we can use a lot of tiny homes. So we're going to need to have tiny home appendix now that we do allow them. We've adopted that. So it could be improved in the future with basically any amendments to state that.
Great. Anyone else? Move on to the motion. We have a motion from the commission.
I want to make a motion, we have the ordinance 3020.
Second.
We have a motion by Leeds and a second by Navy. Roll call, please.
Chair Holman.
Yes.
Mr. Schwartz.
Four.
Mr. Freeman.
Four.
Mr. Navy.
Four.
Mr. Navy.
Four. Motion passes. Next on the agenda is adding zoning complaints.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is a time set aside for Mr. Freeman to appear and address the commission about the zoning complaint we had. That complaint has been resolved by the district court through some of the evidence. And the complaint was that the house across the street at, in the 200 block of South Yellowstone was non-conforming as far as the zoning was concerned. The court has found that the density is within the standards for R2 and that there is in fact no doubt of complaint. But part of our settlement agreement was that the district court could address the commission and make sure that he had an opportunity to be heard. So that that was a part of our settlement agreement.
So I will open this public hearing. This public, this public hearing is now open. Comments? Do you know the agenda?
We have things out of this meeting, so if you should please on it. And I'm sure we have, I was hoping I can more than ever to be helpful.
Do you see any attendance? If you'd like to see one. I think he's here. He's been here before. Anyone else? This public hearing is now closed. My decision, so we'll move on to our ordinances. Our first ordinance, we have two tonight, is ordinance 3021, an ordinance of the City Commission of the City of Livingston, Montana, amending Article 4, Chapter 30 of the Livingston Municipal Code entitled zoning as it pertains to building with some extenders.
So this is the first reading of the zoning ordinance. Essentially, this is the culmination. There's probably one more step of large-scale retail ordinance that the planning board has been working on for over a decade now. Essentially, what it does is significantly strengthen the existing building design standards by changing a lot of the should language to shall language. Should obviously being optional in the zoning, shall being required. The goals of the design standards are to require building design at human scale, desert realm, and discourage standardized and, as you might call it, style architecture. This doesn't apply the design standards to any properties that will have to be done with a zoning map amendment, which is like the next step in this process. Currently, it would apply to those properties that are in the designer view overlay zone, which are very minimal. And all large-scale retail uses that we did amend with zoning a few months back. So any large-scale retail use would be subject to these design standards. Just one note before I finish up here. The zoning commission didn't work on this a long time. They provided the vast majority of the line origin status essentially to the zoning. And at the end of any long project, there was some concern from the zoning commission that maybe they did something or there's some unintended consequences. I do think the zoning commission has done an excellent job in putting this together. They're a lot stronger now. And they will hopefully achieve what we are looking for through the large-scale retail ordinances the way they've been directed by the city commission. If there is something that we've missed or there are unintended consequences to zoning as a local document, I'd say it's not a surprise that that can be changed in the future or updated. Because it is hard to, I'm sure, probably converge on a very lot of them. So that's really all I have for you. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer those.
Any third line questions before we open it? Any public comments? Any public comment? Questions?
Yeah, this has been a long time coming. Very nice work going at it. But see, and it's timely. It's something that's, you know, you can die. Fortunately, we haven't been faced with this yet. But soon, soon come, I would, so might. So nice work. And I'm glad to see the finality of that. Thank you.
Thank you, Clinton. I will, back what you said. This has been a huge process. So Matthew, thanks for pointing that out. It's sort of anticlimactic. Because I know the work that was put into it was years. The conversations were before I came on the commission and that seven plus, 7.8 years. So it, it was a very important issue for a community of this kind. I want to hear that. Celebrate, or some of the people that did all the work for this. for this change and for this building designs and these building design standards are not here to be celebrated. But it was a lot of work, and I really appreciate it. And it's very important. And I hope that the public realizes that just how big of a deal this is. Glad it's here and I get to vote on it. Anyone else?
I don't know a lot of people worked on this, but I think Adam Stern did a tremendous amount of collecting things together. And I think also it's a real monument for totally thinking and having things in place before it's the proverbial too late. And things happen that we don't want to happen. I think it's a terrific step forward. Thank you.
Yeah, first I want to ask a question. So it sounds like there'll be some zoning map updates. Is that correct before it's cross the finish line?
Yeah, so it's on the zoning commission agenda for the next meeting, which is next week to discuss places where they'd like to see this implemented. Depending on how large scale of a change that is, we may have to come back and talk to you all about it. Just potentially very high noticing costs. There's a lot of properties within the zoning area. But basically, the next step, if this were to be adopted or we need to look at the zoning map in place, that design overlay on certain properties, specifically the growth policy falls out.
Great. I think this is, thank you, that's helpful, Matthew. So we're getting there. I agree with what all of you already said. When I came to the commission and was appointed to the planning board, I inherited binders, plural, full of information from more than one person who's been working on this commissioner and planning board members alike. So this is fantastic. It's worth celebrating that we're inching closer to our goals. Just it's as big a deal, I think, in a lot of ways as the growth policy. I know the documents and the work is very different, but the community investment is comparable. I feel like this has been one of the most important topics discussed amongst folks on boards for a very long time. So I'm really happy to stay moving forward. I hope the zoning commission knows that they are doing right by the community. I can't think of anything that they missed. Seems very comprehensive. Thanks, Matthew, for helping them. Anyone else?
We have a motion from the commission. An ordinance 3021.
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance 3021.
Second.
We have a motion by Navy and a second by Navy. Roll call, please.
Chair Holwood.
Yes.
Commissioner Schwartz.
Four.
Commissioner Navy.
Four.
Commissioner May.
Four.
Four. Motion passes. Our last ordinance is ordinance number 3022. An ordinance of the City Commission of the City of Livingston, Montana, mandating Section 30, but 13 of the Livingston Municipal Code entitled Official Zoning Map of the City of Livingston by zoning parcels including property between New York Road Street and the Elster River to the basic the archival radio station of Zane and Densky Residential R2 and Neighborhood Commercial and to improve the area so a neighborhood commercial and the design can be organized.
Thank you, Madam Chair. You annexed the property between North Road Street and effectively R Street, RX Coffee, always and the Elster residential trees, some residential properties, the fireworks stand, the daycare, what was the old Rainbow Court and KBRK. They have basically mirrored some of the zoning that exists, taking what was highway commercial for that first block or at least the first half of the block off of Park Street. And they're recommending that that be zoned neighborhood commercial and that the rest of it be zoned R2 with the mobile home addition to that R2 zone. There are some nonconforming uses. Fireworks stand is a nonconforming use. The radio station tower is a nonconforming use. Everything else should now fit within the zoning, but they are, we don't have neighborhood commercial yet.
So additionally, any house in a neighborhood commercial is on which the house is actually a firework stand and certainly one up is also now nonconforming use to neighborhood commercial does not allow for residences. We discussed this at the last meeting as a discussion item as the zoning commission had recommended neighborhood commercial and statute of another highway commercial. At your request, we have brought it back to neighborhood commercial designation and will put the house into non conformity with the plan being to rezone the area as mixed use as soon as we have a mixed use zone, which again is in the works. It is on the agenda for the zoning commission at the next meeting. That may take more than one zoning commission meeting, so we may be looking at more in January for that adoption of that zoning. And then we have to go back into another zoning map amendment here to replace an neighborhood commercial with a mixed use out which should be taken, but a house out of nonconformity.
Complicated. All right. This is going into public hearing now. Ordinance. One minute.
Yeah, this is the first reading. It'll be a public hearing.
Yes. But we didn't say that. So this is not quite right. So yes, this is our first reading. We'll take it to a public hearing. Because it's a change. So any public comment? No public comments? Commissioners, questions?
I have a question for Matthew. Could you just share some basic information about what it means when we have places or land within city limits that's zoned and it's also within the floodway? I know there's like a different process, right, for those properties. So I was just hoping you could shed a little bit of light on what it means.
Sure. So as you can see in the stat report, it's a portion of the property that's floating floodway and floodplain. Property is in the floodway and what's called a hundred year floodplain. I said there's floodplain regulations. So I have to meet those. Often it has to do with elevating the building to be above base flood elevation. So you're either going to have to put the building on steel or lift it up in some sort of engineering work that allows basic water to flow through, not displacing floodwaters. The floodway is, I won't say completely unbuildable, but generally unbuildable. You basically can't displace any floodwaters in the floodway. So it's very difficult to structure. So in that area, it's on page 149 of the commission packet that's showing the blue hatching. It'd be very tough to build any structures in that floodway without amending the FEMA flood map, which is certainly something that can be done. Essentially, you would do a site specific flood study to make sure that the FEMA study is accurate. Often the FEMA studies are relatively broad, but perhaps a few site specific studies will change a little bit. But currently, anything in the blue hatching is in the floodway. Very difficult to build it. Anything in that area labeled with base floodplains and a hundred year floodplain will have to meet the city's floodplain regulations.
And the city's floodplain regulations are determined by state regulations or?
Generally, floodplain regulations, they're adopted by the city. A lot of them come from federal regulations.
Federal? Okay, thank you. That's what I was curious to know. Thanks.
We have the same question. Anyone else? We have a motion on ordinance 3022.
Moving on to ordinance 3022.
Second. We have a motion by Navy and a second by Navy. Roll call, please.
Chair Holwood.
Yes.
Commissioner Schwartz.
Four.
Commissioner Navy.
Four.
Commissioner May.
Four.
Commissioner May.
Four.
Motion passes. Moving on to resolutions. Tonight, we have one resolution, resolution number 5042. A resolution of the City Commission of the City of Livingston, Montana, that's intended to amend the budget for fiscal year 2021 by making appropriations, adjustments in the amount of $399,160, or $160,000. Revenue adjustments in the amount of $399,445. Is that any of that's a question?
I will bring just a brief introduction and then turn it over to Chief Financial Officer, Madam Chair. This is the regiment amendment, the first reading on the resolution. There will be some requests, then we'll have a public hearing at the next meeting. This is the process that is required to amend the budget and page passing was discussed as to the funds that are being amended, which also work in the resolution.
Well, Courtney already took most of my words for that. So just note, in the resolution itself, there is a detailed list of what specifically we are amending the budget for, what those items are and what causes those overrun. Many of those were things that were discussed in prior commission meetings. The ones specifically for the general fund for sidewalks, this was just a result of doing projects in the downtown area where we don't know what those costs are going to be. And those are actually reimbursed by the owners through assessments. And the BID, they actually just collected for revenue this year than we had anticipated. Any specific questions on any of these items? Any questions?
Cut and dry. Yes. Any public comments? Commissioners, any questions? Anything else? Or a motion?
I just appreciate that Paige keeps us on the loop as we go, so there's no more questions. And you're on the agenda. Thank you.
Thanks, Paige, for staying for the whole meeting for that.
I'll be leaving you in shortly.
Thirty seconds obtained.
You're right.
We have a motion from the commission.
I make motion to approve resolution 5002. Second.
We have a motion by Schwartz and a second by Navy. Roll call, please.
Chair Holwood.
Yes.
Commissioner Schwartz.
Four.
Commissioner Navy.
Four.
Commissioner May.
Four.
Commissioner May.
Four. Motion passes. Then we have three action items and then four. Our first action item is to discuss the county health board's decision on local government authority.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We're going to take these, whatever the time we need to discuss items only. We're not asking you to make a decision on any of these issues today. The first item is the city county health board's decision on local government authority. On the second to last Friday of September, the city county health board met and their first action item was to determine whether or not, whether, what governing body they would recognize. You have all had the legal memo, including the executive summary. There is, the health board is not allowed to decide who their governing body is. That's set by state statute. And it's set out in the bylaws in the city county compact, none of which contemplated the changes that the legislature made or amended. So the county, city county compact needs to be updated. The bylaws and the city county compact both reference the state code, which is Title 50, Chapter 2. And they all, they both asked that the city county health board operate under those chapters, which include 50-2-116, which is the, which are the powers of the city county health board, and 50-2-118, which are the powers of the local health officer. And how those work in concert were discussed in the memo. I'm going to leave you with a few questions.
Commissioners, questions? So what, I guess, for clarity, what we're looking at is aligning more to recent legislation or potentially in the future are various documents. Been working with compact, for example, or working through the compact and having aligned better.
That would be helpful. Until we get into that discussion, we've initiated some of those discussions with the county commission. We hope that those things will develop over the course of the next couple of months.
Any other questions?
I'm kind of missing something as far as, is it still up in the air in terms of who the governing body is?
No. You are the governing body for the city. So any decision that requires government oversight within the statute as it was amended in 2021, you would make that decision for the city jurisdiction and the county would make that decision for the county jurisdiction. At the time that you reviewed a decision, if it were reviewable, and some of them are not, you would have the option to adopt, amend, or reject the regulation or the policy that they created. Thank you.
Anyone else? Nothing?
I'll just add, yeah, there was a lot of, I don't know, when this was all going down, it was an awesome, you know, a lot of misunderstanding and not knowing exactly who's in charge of what. It just, it really needs to be clarified. With the county on the compact, this whole thing, it's a mess that needs to be cleaned up. A good start that Courtney's gotten out of herself. I appreciate that, the clarification and all that. Thank you. How are you?
I won't go too into this because in my opinion, well, shiny. It's a frustrating part of our job when the legislature took away, in a sense, a lot of health boards. Not control, because I don't think it's control. I think a lot of their opportunities to help their communities. And this, we're now having to fix some of our, somehow what we're working through as a community because of that conflict that was created, which I think was a political conflict in response to COVID. And that's what most people think. And now we're, we have to also fix it here because it was made a bigger mess there. And I think it's unfortunate. And this is, I don't think our compact work is a bad idea. We used to work on it all the time. We met monthly, two commissioners, that was one health mission. And we worked through the compact. And then we would have the city manager join in and give feedback. So going back to our work on our county contract, how we see.
I don't think any of it's been updated since at least 2018. And a lot of it is 2012, 2014.
Anywhere else? Moving on. Discuss the legal update on county commission health board decision to stop providing information on COVID positive individuals to first responders.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The second issue taken up by the city county health board at their meeting two Fridays ago was whether or not they were going to rescind their agreement to the litigation that was in place. Their agreement in November of last year to provide names and addresses of COVID positive cases ended that litigation and was, that was the settlement for that. They decided to rescind their agreement to that. They based their rescission on the lack of emergency in part in the Montana healthcare guidelines, standards. guidelines, standards for the release of information. You will see in the memo in the local community that those, both the HIPAA standards and Montana healthcare guideline standards for the release of information related to communicable diseases by public health agencies has a, an exception for the health and safety of our public as well as the health and safety of first responders. Under HIPAA, there is no requirement for the public health agency to disclose that they are releasing the information. There is, the state law is silent unless published.
First, we begin to make motion to send a meeting.
Make motion when you, second?
All right. All right. Does anyone have questions? You're ready to answer this information only at this point? Any other, anything else that we need to know at this time?
I have not heard from Chair Pitter, but I have heard from our first responders, and they are so interested in having that information. It allows them to reduce the amount of personnel that are being exposed and to take additional precautions to keep them safe and to try to reduce this threat within the limited resource that is our first responders and also within the community.
Okay. What are next steps?
Additional conversations with county administration now that they, I hope, have seen the legal thing that laid out the standards and the way that the laws work together to get to that point. We can hope for some accommodation and we're looking at.
Thank you. Next item is to discuss board communications. I asked to put this on. My only, and I did, I have talked before me, a little bit about it, my only thing is Michael's not here. And the, the document, the communication itself is from Michael. And I have some concerns with just, just the roles and responsibilities of our boards and the importance of their, their work and making sure that we're doing everything equally as far as by Montana code. And just to making sure that we do, I guess, generally embrace our boards and still expect them to follow the letter of the law. But I feel like within this communication, there seems to be some, some problems that I would like to have us work through. And maybe at this point it could be more informational until Michael could join. But I do think we have some conversations to be had about this communication and the roles of our boards. Any thoughts?
Yeah, I agree with everything that you've said, Chair Holman, and I think the boards play an interesting role as advisors to the commission. And it is important to be following code and have practical procedures, but also have practical procedures that are actually achievable. And I'm concerned that, I'm concerned about some of the issues in here not being possible. So it'd be good to have more conversation, like communicating directly with an individual city resident on a specific issue outside of a meeting, for example. If people know we're on boards or commissions and they see us surround town, they often have things to communicate outside of the meeting. And so that is just one obviously sample of something to work through because we can't. I mean, we could tell people not to speak to us when we're not in meetings, but that doesn't seem right.
So, how do we move forward on this? I would prefer to have more time with Michael.
Yep.
And Courtney's been very helpful, we talked to her a lot of this and helped me understand it more. Because there's requirements under, in law, in law, you know, zoning and planning and how boards, the advisory boards work with commissioners for cities. So, I think I'm getting a better understanding, but I also have still some concerns about just seeing Michael work through us. So moving it.
Certainly, we can. And I appreciate the conversation that we were able to have today, and I was direct your attention to page twenty-two through twenty-six of the board handbook to lay out some of the specific expectations of communication. It is absolutely not the intention to cycle communication between public officials in the public or between board members in the public. But there is a concern that if those private conversations don't come into the public meeting, then we're not affording the board and then therefore the commission the opportunity to know what those conversations were and what that input was. So, within the confines of our notice and public participation guidelines as well as the export to communication guidelines and our open public process, we want to keep those things on the up and up. And we also want to make sure that our board members know that they are appreciated, but that there are some guardrails for communication and public participation, or perhaps some frame or some reframing of this schedule.
That's helpful. And we talked quite a bit about board trainings back in the before times. So it might be a good thing to revisit what does it look like in the now times? Because we, I think we talked about some sort of yearly opportunity so that everyone on boards would have an understanding of process. Now, Dan Clark has done different things for us in the past, but maybe that would be also a good thing to include in the conversation when this comes back up, is what does that look like in COVID times?
Agreed. And I think that it's easier for some of the boards who have a dedicated staff member like zoning and planning, where not be competitive either rather for some of that process and be able to be the liaison, we don't necessarily have that with some or all of the other boards. And it would be helpful to maybe refine that process a little bit so that that, that information is being passed through a staff member so that the city manager can adequately oversee, which is his, which is his duty under the city ordinances in order to manage those boards.
I think that's a really great point, having Matthew present consistently at all planning board meetings. Wow. I mean, what a difference, right, in terms of, and it's not to say that it was, anybody was doing not a great job before. I think we have the capacity now to do all the work. Maybe we don't, maybe there's more work than Matthew can do, or Matthew and Jim can do in that department, but it really has made a difference to have that capacity on board, moving things forward. It's a really good point. And just, it's a more of a smooth operating board than it was, I think, when we didn't always have access to information directly.
And these statutes and principles are designed to be understood by laypeople so that they don't have to be interpreted by attorneys or necessarily guided by staff people. I mean, we really want that input to be fairly organic from the boards, just within the confines.
Well, our reality is, we don't have a, Matt, you're quite famous tonight, on the tree board, right? We have a volunteer who has a ton of experience, who happens to be on the tree board. So I think we have to think about boards in a different way, too. And I mean, what I love about boards, and our boards in particular, is we, they bring to us ideas. Way this looks is we bring the ideas to them and then the city works through the idea and then they decide to vote on it. It's flipping it. And in, in some ways, not completely, I'm not describing it exactly, but that can be a problem because that's really, that's not adding their input, and they're really the reps for the community that then come to us, it's not adding enough of that, that work, that focus and drive that they have to help improve our community in, you know, various ways, like through the tree board, parks and trails. You know, we've added boards in the past year. So I don't want us to lose that because I think they're different. These boards can be treated slightly differently as well.
And you can also use them to inform you when you have priorities that you want to run through those boards, so that they are doing some of that legwork for you and then bringing back the advice that you're looking for with the broader community profile.
And I think a prime example of that is the Oak Street Connector. Absolutely would not exist had it not been for a board. And not that Shannon didn't do a ton of work, I mean, he really took that on and amazing work and really helped working with, you know, MDOT, different organizations, way bigger than, you know, our little board members, but that kind of big project coming from the community not initially, and not from the city manager or the commission. And I think that's important. All right. So we'll continue working with Michael a little bit, well, since he's gone, I'll have to check in with him. So, all right. That is everything. Other than we have a closed session of personnel issue, which closed sessions are when personnel is discussed on that project. We have a conference. We have a talk at the end. And we're wanting to, in, in, in. Open it to public comments on the news.